Oh, geez.
Order.
Hey, Mr. Edgar, do you mind if we get started?
Oh, man.
Oh. I call the regular session of the City Commission to order for February 3rd, 2016. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here.
If you all please stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as I usually say, if you have a cell phone, please silence it or turn it off. Ceremonies, proclamations, and presentations, we have a presentation from the Clackamas Community College Board and Staff.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, you're on. All right.
Thank you for having us. Let's see if, do I run this thing or...
Oh, you got a, you got a presentation?
Yeah.
Do you? Okay, the screen's got it.
Okay, it's coming. So, why don't you guys introduce yourselves for the record while we get that going.
All right, thank you. For the record, my name's Chris Groner, and I represent Oregon City for the Board on Clackamas Community College.
I'm Bob Cockburn, I'm Dean of Campus Services for the college. And we also have Lori Hall, our Public Information Officer, in the audience here.
Welcome. So, as that's loading up, I just want to say thank you again for having us here tonight. I'm going to give you a quick update on our bond referendum projects. As you might recall, last November, we approved a $90 million bond measure to expand college classrooms and labs and modernize equipment. Buy some time here while that comes out. And the passage of the bond also resulted in the college receiving $16 million in state matching funds.
There it comes. There we go. All right, there we go.
As well as our foundation is launching the President's Challenge next year to raise an additional $5 million to supplement the bond, I, along with the rest of the Board of Education, want to thank everyone for their vote on the measure, which narrowly passed 52 to 48. This funding will allow CCC to grow and ensure students to continue to have opportunities in, for in-demand living wage jobs and to pursue transfer degrees. So, again, thank you guys very much. At our October 2015 meeting, the Board adopted a resolution approving the master plan for our Oregon City campus, as well as the concept plan for the second phase of our Harmony Campus in Milwaukee. Tonight, I'd like to give you a quick update on both of those plans. For the Oregon City Campus Master Plan, this was a long-term collaborative effort between architects, college leadership, and the community to envision the future of this campus. The plan includes a redesigned entrance to the campus, including a new transit center and Myers Road connection. It also opens the center of campus, improves sightlines and the general flow. And best of all, it allows for continued expansion as the college grows. We'll be constructing a new industrial technical center on the Oregon City campus. This building will have labs and classrooms that benefit programs such as electronics, automotive, manufacturing, and welding. There will be large bays for machinery with classrooms and offices on the first and second floors. There'll also be an option to expand the building to the west, left of the building in this map, as programs expand. This slide shows the new addition of our, to our DeJardine Science Building. The entire addition will be devoted to labs and classrooms, so we can offer modern equipment for programs like biology, chemistry, and other natural sciences. The next project is the replacement of our current Student Services Community Commons Building on the Oregon City campus. The new student and community facility will allow the college to co-locate support services like financial aid, veteran services, disability resources, advising, counseling, and career coaching in one location. These critical resources help students stay in school and on track with their career and academic pathways, and housing them in one building will make it much more convenient for students. As programs move into the new buildings, there will be opportunities to renovate existing facilities to provide structural and program upgrades. Some of the projects include elevator upgrades, Title IX upgrades, repurposing of Barlow Hall, garages and bays, repurposing of the bookstore and McLaughlin classroom space, refurbishing polling classrooms, and also planned classroom and infrastructure upgrades on the Wilsonville Campus. Over in Milwaukee, we're making improvements on our Harmony Campus. This project will replace the 61-year-old former Oregon Institute of Technology. The new facility will allow CCC to continue to grow its health science, workforce development, and general education offerings in the North Clackamas area. Some of the improvements include increased pedestrian accessibility, improved vehicle access, more parking, potential for a transit pull-off, and potential to locate the North Clackamas Fire Department Administrative Building on the west side of campus. The new Harmony Building will be roughly 42,500 square feet, and the project timeline, we have completed the schematics and design development, and we're now looking to partner program and class relocation to complete that in the spring of 2016, demolition and pre-construction spring and summer of 2016, and construction to begin summer of 2016 for a fall occupancy of 2017. Other bond projects include Myers Road Extension. The college required by the ODOT to take part in the construction of the road at the intersection, Highway 213 and Myers Road. It's expected to add a third entrance to the college, and I think I'm one behind. Yes. A one-time $40,000 gift for each school district in our, in our college district to be used towards an investment that strengthens our partner, their partnerships with the college, a redevelopment of the Environmental Learning Center, and improvements to strengthen the vitality of the headwaters of Newell Creek. And speaking of that, we'd like to invite you to mark your calendars for Saturday, May 21st, for our 50th birthday groundbreaking celebration. And that is, that's all we have today. We're pleased to take any questions that myself or Bob might be able to answer.
Chris, what's the, the Student Services Building? You're going to replace that? That's, you're, take that down and replace where it's at?
That's right.
Okay. All right. And then repurpose, repurposing the Barlow Bays there, is that because the, all that equipment's going to go in that new building? So, the bays, the welding, mechanical bays that are in Barlow now will be something else?
Let me get on...
Go ahead. Yeah, the, just like you said, the, the current north part of that Barlow has the manufacturing equipment and classrooms in it. We're going to be moving those to the Industrial Technical Center. That'll open that space up, and we're, at this point, we're planning on moving, growing automotive into both sides of that.
Good. All right. Excellent.
I'd be interested in learning more about the Industrial Technical Center and the types of courses and concentrations would be housed there.
Sure, that's, let me get that one.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's our manufacturing department, so that's our machining, our CNC, computer-aided design. We also are looking at moving our renewable energy program in there. Right now, they're spread out over several areas on campus, so we want to house them in one space. And then we're also looking to move some of our water and environmental technology programs there. It's a, the footprint right now is, is smaller than all the hopes and dreams we have for that, but primarily, if you think about advanced manufacturing, that's what will be housed in that.
Okay. That's great.
So, I met with the Regional Director of the Small Business Administration and two of their staffers this week on an unrelated subject, and in that discussion, it turns out that one of the staffers is actually being seconded from the Department of Commerce, and she was, I want to say, excited to hear about this new facility that, because they're, I guess Eric could probably explain a little better what her excitement level was all about. Could you maybe talk about that?
Sure, I wasn't prepared.
Sure. The wheels on the bus? Yeah, there we go.
So, if I, if I recall correctly, I think she's just excited about the fact that we are connecting with, with the college and enhancing or trying to bring out the manufacturing component to the workforce. She's on a committee back in Washington, DC, who's focusing on that very thing nationwide, trying to put manufacturing in, back into work in America, and so she's excited about our partnership with the industrial lands that we've incorporated around the college. Is that what you were looking for?
Yes. Thank you. I guess the only other question I have is, I'm trying to picture in my head where the Industrial Technical Center is going to go. Is that on the space where the baseball field is now?
Go ahead, Bob.
It's on the space where the tennis courts are.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
Yeah. See if I can get it back to that.
There's a good one right there, Chris.
Right there?
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
Does it have a pointer?
So, the, the, in the slide, I think you can see that. The slide shows the baseball field and the track, and just, just...
Oh, I see. Okay, all right, all right. Now, now I'm oriented. Now I get it. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, right, right there.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Questions? All right, thanks for coming. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So, back to the agenda, citizen comments. Do we have anybody up for citizen comments?
Hello, my name is Dorothy Dollschred. I've spoken a couple of times to various different organizations and volunteer groups and committees in Oregon City. I want to thank everyone for their participation. You guys worked effortlessly, and I'm just an observer. You worked effortlessly. I'm sure you've all read the newspaper about Waterboard Park. This has been something I have been toting because it's very dear to my heart. The Heritage Tree Program is very dear to my heart, as is also because you're voting on it and you help bring about it. The atrocity that's happened in Waterboard Park is being horribly blown over by a simple apology and... I'm losing my words because I'm getting, I'm trying to calm, keep myself calm. The gravity of this assault on Waterboard Park, if it was done in any other park like Clackamas Park, would render it to a football field. If this was done in Riverside Park, one-third of those magnificent trees would be gone. No one in their right mind, especially someone of this caliber. Mr. Lindquist has worked with in our community. You have all probably worked with him at one time or another. I voted for him. It's, we need to stand and support for the highest possible finding and a, and, and justice and what, I don't know if you can personally say anything. I'm wishing that all of you would at least personally as citizens write the district attorney's office. I have been gently writing them every other week. We need to praise the person who at least had the courage to pick up the phone because he seen his friends, his neighbors were in support of this. If those neighbors are in support, would they step up to that line? Do you hear them on the board saying, "Oh, I was in total support on it"? We need to tell the person and give them their $250 for making the phone call and make that person an Oregon City Lord, an Oregon City Hero. I don't know if the city commissioners can write anything and express it to our district attorneys, but this is an outrage, and I've heard people that are just dumbfounded by it, just dumbfounded. I don't know what else more I can say. I think you can hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let me assure you that the City Commission has discussed this situation, and there won't be any glossing over. Most of the situation is legal, and we can't discuss that part of it, but...
I understand, that's why I haven't...
But the City Commission is definitely united in making sure that we handle this process the best way we can.
And I would please take this with a huge grain of salt, but by showing that you're, the, our, our city commissioners would come together on this and stand behind it, will kind of squelches our cronyism, that kind of somewhat happens in western civilization.
Point taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so we'll move on to adoption and agenda. Everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Public hearings. PC 16 dash 026, request for continuance, re-adoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Planning File, LE 15 dash 03. Are we ever going to see the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan?
Yes.
Fortunately, you didn't ask when.
Time during my next, during this term.
We've only got four years here.
The Planning Commission at their last hearing heard the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. They entered a, they recommended a preliminary approval. They did ask staff to bring back a memo outlining some of their concerns and clarifying their, their position. That is going to be back in front of the Planning Commission on February 22nd. The record at this point is closed at the Planning Commission level, so we do expect them to, they wanted to review the memo to make sure that it was clear when it was brought forward to the Commission for your consideration. So, we are requesting that you open the public hearing tonight, take testimony from any citizen who wishes to testify, and then continue the hearing date for Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan to the date certain of March 2nd, 2016.
So, opening public hearing on PC 16 dash 26, request for continuance, re-adoption of Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. Is there anybody wishing to speak? Mr. Edgar?
Can you give that up?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, and my name's Paul Edgar. I'm a citizen of Oregon City. I wanted to share with you an email that I sent out to the Clackamas County Planning Manager for Transportation and the ODOT Region One Planning Manager. And I'm trying to ask of them how we can be part of the solution and understanding how we maintain Highway 213 and Beaver Creek Road and that intersection as a major freight route, which is identified in the comprehensive plan. And I, my perception is that we need an educational town hall and workshops where we all come together. And, and this is critical in understanding how we adjudicate an intersection like that to where, under volume-over-capacity methodology, you can mitigate congestion. We need to understand what the mitigation techniques are and if they're effective, if they will really work. And right now, we're talking about something we don't have all the answers for, and we don't even have a funding mechanism to make any corrections or alterations, and according to the, to the state code, we need to have that before we can take off onto any tax. And so, we know that in assessments over a lot of years, that that intersection, in fact, when we did all of the transportation studies, it was based upon having an overpass where Beaver Creek went under, and 213 went under it, under that. And so, now we don't have that. So, that means literally that all of the transportation studies, which are the core of the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, really are not relevant right now. And so, when they, when LCDC sent back the Concept Plan, they said, "Get your act together on these infrastructure and, and transportation" was one of the most relevant of the points. So, what I'm trying to say here with this, and I'm asking the partners, the national partners, the Planning Commission at, at ODOT, the Planning Commission at, at, at Clackamas County, and for us to get together and try to figure it out and not, and not hide, because I think the relevant factor is that we'll come up and identify that we need that overpass, and we're going to need to figure out how to get these people, everyone together, and fund it and make it happen, or we're going to hurt a lot of job development, the economy, and I hope that we can work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Anybody else? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And do we need it? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to continue the re-adoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan to a date certain of...
March 2nd.
March 2nd.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Mengeberg. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, next up. 6B, 16 dash 059, Resolution Number 16 dash 03, calling for an election to approve the change in status and construction of improvements for a portion of the Wesley Lynn Park under Section 41 of the Oregon City Charter and adopting a ballot title. This would be Mr. Archer?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Holliday, and commission before you is Resolution 16 dash 03, which if approved, will authorize the city to file a ballot title for the construction of improvements on a portion of Wesley Lynn Park. This is per the City Charter, Section 41. If approved, and if we move forward, it would be placed, or it's anticipated to be placed on the May 17th primary election. Staff presented this matter to the commission at your January 12th work session, and it was also reviewed at the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting on January 28th. At both of these meetings, there was support to bring this back to the commission for formal approval, which is what we're doing tonight. In just a quick summary, we went over the details at length last time, so I'm not going to go through all the pictures and everything unless you have any specific need to do that, but just a very, kind of a brief summary reminder of what we're talking about. A property owner adjacent to the undeveloped northwest portion of Wesley Lynn Park on, adjacent to and off of Leland Road is working with Icon Construction to develop a nine-house subdivision. Rick Givens is present to represent the developer this evening. He's available to answer any questions on their behalf, should you have any, or if there's any clarification needed on their part. Development of the subdivision will require that the developer construct a full width local street, most of which would be on our park property. Though it is on city park property, the adjacent owner does have a legal easement right, but nevertheless, we still need to take this to a vote of the people to have that approved. Additionally, the developer needs to construct an underground stormwater outfall conveyance system across park property. It would be underground, it will be not visible after construction, it'll just be conveyed to a, a system on the other side of the park. This will require a 15-foot easement through the park property. The city and the developer have discussed terms which will substantially enhance the pedestrian access to, to the park and also provide future access, future vehicular access to the park, to the undeveloped portion of the park. This is something that we believe will need to do at some point, so this, this is a beneficial thing. City approval for the easements and access as described to develop will be conditioned on formal agreement between the city and the developer. So, we have the vote, which is, do we have permission? We'd be asking our, our voters, do we have permission to do this? And then, secondly, separated from that vote, we will be continuing to negotiate terms of specifically how this will all work. So, the, the vote is the permission, but we'll still be doing a city, what will end up being a city-approved development conditions list that will, will have some, for example, some additional things have been discussed, such as a wider-than-normal sidewalk or, or walkway entrance to the park and some things of that, excuse me, of that nature. I think it's important to note as well that the proposed road and utility improvements, all of the things that we've talked about are, are to be made at no cost to the city. Because this is a primary election, there will be no additional cost to put this on the ballot. Were there to be, it would have been on the developer to, to bear that cost, but there is no additional cost for this vote. And so, that's my report. Again, that is a very brief summary of what we discussed at length before, but if you have additional or, or specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And again, the developer's representative is here to answer as well.
I just have one. Coming off of Leland Road onto this new road, why is there that, that little jog? Why didn't it just straight tee into Leland?
Lines up the intersection.
I believe it's because of alignment. I believe it is.
Okay.
Because that, yeah, that's correct. It's alignment issue.
All right. That's all I want to know. Anybody else? Motion?
So, there's full sidewalks on both sides, and we may have the opportunity to make, make sure we have a little wider sidewalk?
Correct, that's what we're discussing, and that's the part that would be...
For access to the park, yeah, yeah, okay.
Correct.
Or future parking lot. So, this is good. They'll provide that access.
Okay.
Correct.
I move to approve Resolution Number 16 oh three, authorizing it to be filed with ballot title with the city recorder.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, general business. 16 dash 055, introduction of ordinance number 16 dash 1002, repealing one section of Chapter 12.08, Section 40, and adopting a new Chapter 12 dot 32, Heritage Trees. Who stopped putting the guy on there? Who's this? Mr. Lewis? Mr. Archer? Who is this?
This will be me tonight. So, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask Pete Walter to come up with the Planning Department to discuss the specifics, but essentially, we worked with the Natural Resources Committee and the Planning Commission to make recommended approvals and revisions to the Heritage Tree Ordinance to provide clarity for both applicants as well as staff in how we process and make recommendations for the heritage, the voluntary Heritage Tree Program. So, I'll go ahead and turn that over to Pete to walk through quickly, and we'll answer whatever questions you may have.
And good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So, the Natural Resources Committee worked on this code 2014, and we, we sent it to the Planning Commission in December. There were certain changes made at the Planning Commission, mostly cosmetic, but the code that you see as a revision is largely the one that was drafted by the Natural Resources Committee. And what it includes are a much more detailed process, which provides clarity for Heritage Tree nomination and designation for trees within the city, based on whether they occur on private property or city property or public right-of-way or properties that are governmentally-owned that are not Oregon City properties. And so, all of those are spelled out in much more detail, makes it a little bit lengthier, but it's a lot clearer to follow. The criteria for designation include site criteria as well as heritage criteria. I think the code is going to provide a lot more clarity for staff in terms of how we review applications and how we process them for you, and the timeliness of those applications as well. One of the Planning Commission's main recommendations here is included in a memorandum, which summarizes how they would like to include incentives that could possibly be used to get more nominations through the process. But adopting the code is the first step. We already have a code, but this code is better, and we are looking forward to using it. Any questions?
What kinds of incentives were debated by the committee?
Yeah, I'd be happy to go into a little more detail on that. So, types of incentives that might promote more Heritage Tree designations could be the use of grant funding to assist with tree maintenance and technical assistance and arborist reports and things like that, since large tree maintenance tends to be exponentially more... Since large tree maintenance tends to be exponentially more costly as the tree ages, this is something that is a serious consideration for property owners who have large trees, and may be an aspect of why they don't move forward with a designation. But that's something that we've been asked about by prospective applicants from time to time and that sort of thing. However, there's a lot of options for how we go about doing that, and we don't want to hamstring ourselves by trying to decide what kinds of incentives need to be done at this point.
Does the city have an arborist on staff?
Well, we don't have a certified arborist on staff. Our Parks Department has horticulture-trained Parks Manager who's very good and that sort of thing. And we have staff who have natural resource degrees and forestry degrees and that sort of thing.
I think I'd like to see an effort at some point to reach out to other properties in the city that are publicly owned, one of which is the high school, which has two incredible, actually more than two incredible historic trees on its property. I think, you know, if we looked at county property, other property, if we reached out to those, and just asked, you know, this is a thing that we have with the city, you know, is there any trees on your property that fit that? I think it would be a really good thing to reach out. Because I don't know if they would do it on their own, but...
Yeah, right. Yeah, publicizing the program is certainly something we can look into doing more of, yeah.
So Pete, on page, on the revised part of that, starts on page six, "An application to remove a heritage tree." And we give a few ideas there. The first one was view obstruction. You know, we're a little sensitive to this tonight, right now, okay? And then routine pruning, you know, this is... I think Tony had mentioned something about trying to develop some clarity here, and, you know, gosh, if the thing's in my view, I can apply to take it down, is that correct?
It's actually the opposite.
It's the opposite.
Yeah, if you read the sentence above it, "For the purposes of making this determination, the following tree impact shall not be considered unreasonable burdens on the property owner or, if appropriate, the city." So you can't, so to take it down, you've got to demonstrate the burden is unreasonable, and it says, "These aren't unreasonable burdens."
We might want to highlight that a little bit up there, so somebody might miss it.
Well, I think it's, you need to be, it's fairly clear in here that the private property owners will only have heritage tree designations if they request it, or, you know...
Voluntary.
A letter, yes, totally voluntary. I do have one question, though. I'm curious why the sequoia is not on the list. It would seem to me we have fairly, a few fairly significant sequoia trees, one being at the swimming pool.
I think, well, it would definitely fall under the other evergreen and conifer trees, which would potentially include a lot of conifers that are potentially heritage trees. But if the Commission sees...
Well, given the slow growth rate of the sequoia, one would assume that a couple of those trees in the McLaughlin neighborhood are fairly significant.
He's at it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, Pete, I have a question. So as far as the incentives go, is this something that the Natural Resource Committee is going to work on, and are they going to reach out to nonprofits and part of the Tree USA program and that type of thing?
I think it's something that we would be happy to put into our work plan, and we'll get back to you on for 2016 as an item that we can start to look into more specificity as to what grants are available and what, how those grants could be used.
Okay, thank you.
So what's the, are we, is this a first reading, or are we...
Correct, it's a, I think it's scheduled as a public hearing and then a first reading.
It's not, it's scheduled as a general business, not as a public hearing.
It certainly can be adopted as general business. You're correct, it is under general business, I misread it, but yeah. It is general business, and it's the first reading.
I move to have the first reading read of Ordinance Number 16-1002, repealing one section of Chapter 12.8, Section 40, and adopting a new chapter, heritage trees.
Second.
A friendly amendment to add sequoias to the list of acceptable trees.
Mr. Geisman.
Ordinance Number 16-1002, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City amending the Oregon City Municipal Code by repealing one section of Chapter 12.08, Public and Street Trees, Section 12.08040, Heritage Trees and Groves, and adopting a new chapter, 12.32, Heritage Trees.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Thank you.
So we're at 16-057, Tourism Grant Process Proposal Update, Mr. Archer?
Underwood.
Underwood, there we go.
Thank you, Mayor. December 8th, staff presented to the Commission several options to revise the tourism grant award process for the upcoming 2016 grant cycle. We had a thorough discussion about that, and then after that discussion, the Commission had a consensus to direct staff to go back and contact past applicants of the usual suspects from the city, for the city tourism dollars, to assess their need for the funds for this year, if they budgeted those already, and to try to determine an amount that we would reserve for the 2016 grant cycle. The remaining funds being held back for implementation of the tourism grant strategy that was proposed by the Main Street Organization in October. So I have since done that. I've contacted 10 agencies. We have three that are requesting that we keep the grant cycle in place for this year, that the amount comes to around $5,000. So I'm recommending that we hold $5,000 back from our revenues from the transient room tax to award those grants, and then reserve the rest of the amount to implement the tourism strategy.
Commissioner Smith?
What is the process that is going to happen with these other three groups?
Well, it's not proposed to be changed, so it'd be the same as it's happened every year.
No, that's...
But, so the point is, I think, is are we going to allow other people to, are we just opening it for these three groups, or are we going to allow anybody else to apply?
I see what you're saying. Well, that wasn't determined by me. I mean, that's, that would be the Commission, to how you would want to do that. So I'm just saying that there's potential for at least $5,000 to be applied for.
Okay, so I think based on our discussion at the last meeting, the mayor, you know, the mayor left that open, that if there were groups that wanted to come, that they would come to this commission, and that we would be, I think, very critical of how that money was used in terms of tourism projects, I think is what you were saying, that, you know, we, you know, as a Commission, I think, agreed last meeting that most of this money should be set aside, and that we were really making an exception, which even though we'd already told everyone a year ago that we were going to hold the money, that we might make an exception for a couple groups that may not have heard, or didn't know, or for some reason fell through the cracks. That still worries me a lot. And it worries me because we had a huge support by a lot of organizations in Oregon City that wrote letters and said, "We are willing to forego this process," so that the money could be put into, just build up until we get the tourism plan figured out. To award money to other groups after, you know, other, after the mass majority of the groups saying, "We're going to not ask for money because we know it's important to hold it aside." I think it is kind of a slap in the face to then keep giving out money. So I would hope we don't do that, and that we hold all of it aside. I think it just, it'll create, you know, I don't know how we deal with that. And not knowing what the three events are, or not knowing what the three groups are at this moment, it's really hard to know that. Anyway, that's my input on that.
Who else?
So, no, yes, do we open it up, but we're only opening it up to three, you know, or are we just saying, just for these three groups, we're giving them money? It's kind of awkward.
Are we opening it up with $5,000?
Up with $5,000 is the limit.
Yeah, so, but we're opening it up for $5,000, and anybody can apply. Okay.
So, yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have a hard time with this also, because I remember this whole process, and we were very clear, and like Rocky said, there were many letters from these groups saying, "For the good of the whole, we're going to sacrifice this for a holistic, you know, look at tourism." And I know you reached out to the groups, and a lot of the groups probably remembered that, so they're like, "Okay, we're going to forego this." And then the three people, the three groups that actually said, "Okay, we do want this." Should they get it just because they didn't sacrifice for the good of the whole? So I do have a problem with it, because I think we're getting into blurred lines here, and kind of going off the process that we had said we were going to do. So that's the difficulty I have with it.
Who else?
Based on what Rocky and Carol said, I guess I'd be more inclined to not even open up the $5,000 and designate that for the larger tourism marketing effort later.
So, who are the groups?
They are the high school band, Rivers of Life Center, and Trick and Racy Cars. All the others expressed that they were not, they were either not going to apply, they weren't planning on it at all, or they would go through the CPP program.
Well, I guess, I'm confused about the band, but we won't go there.
They do a car show at the high school?
Yeah.
Well, it wasn't quite...
Okay. Well, I think, just for me, you know, Trick and Racy's had plenty of years. And if, I think everybody understands my feeling about these kinds of things, that, you know, the cities, whether the grant money or whatever, is seed money, and if you can't make your event successful after two or three years, then there's something wrong with the organization, or there's something wrong with the event. So, Commissioner Polly?
Yeah, and I feel if we just opened it up for those three, I think it would look like favoritism for the people that said, "Okay, we're going to forego this for the good of the whole." I think the only way would be able to just open it up entirely and do what we've done the past years, but we all agreed that we were going to take a new approach and look at tourism in a holistic way, and most of the organizations were on board with that and had letters of support. So that was what we decided last year, and I think we should go through that process that we agreed upon.
I move to not approve any...
Commissioner Smith, real quick, I think Wyatt, oh, you're good? Okay, sorry. He was on the speaker list.
You can go. So I would move to hold all of the tourism money and not award grants for the 2016 cycle.
Second.
So, I think I agree with all of that, but I'm, I don't know, I guess I'm a little conflicted here, but...
I don't know.
I have a suggestion. Is it possible to reach out to those groups and suggest other types of grants, maybe metro enhancement, or just, or other types of things that maybe, you know, give them some help?
I can do that. In my discussions with them, I did mention the CPP program, we talked about that. And I believe there's one other that knows about the metro grants extensively, so...
So I guess, given that it's only $5,000, and you divide up $5,000 between three groups, you're not talking about a whole lot of money that couldn't be replaced by some other kind of fundraising, I guess would be my point. So call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, so, we're at the consent agenda, I think, yes. But I'm confused. So, I thought we talked about the Singer Hill Road thing already tonight, didn't we?
So, the Singer Hill Road was as the Urban Rural Commission dedicated to the city.
That's right, I was trying to, because I was trying to find it on the agenda, I'm losing my mind here. Okay, I got it now.
We're on the other side of the transition.
Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I don't think so.
I entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Polly. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, just to clarify before we move on to communications, the City Commission met in executive session before the meeting to, and it doesn't, let me just do this the right So, pursuant to ORS 192-660-2F, "Consider information or records exempt from law from public inspection; 2H, to consult with counsel concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely filed; and 2A, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent." We did not complete that executive session. When we are done here tonight, we will go back into executive session. I don't anticipate that we would need to come back out into regular session to make any decisions, is that right?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so, just so that everybody knows what we're doing when we don't walk out of here tonight. Communications, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. Just a reminder that tomorrow, February 4th, at 5:30, the Pioneer Community Center, there'll be a Tourism Roundtable discussion and Strategy Meeting. Also, on Monday, March 21st, we're going to have the honor of having students from our sister city, Tadashina, visiting us. So we will provide additional information on what the schedule for that day looks like, but just wanted to get it out there, then on Monday, March 21st...
Hold on, hold on. So, I did get a call from the sister city people, and they would like, I'm going to plan on being here at City Hall for, when they come here. If one or two of the rest of you would like to be here, that would be sort of good for the kids, I think. I don't know a time. Mr. Conk will get back.
We'll have to get back once we firm up the schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
So, and we have a couple of other announcements from some of our directors. I'll start with John Lewis.
Thank you. So I just wanted to inform you of a project that we're taking on in both Public Works and Planning Department. It's kind of a joint effort, but as you know, our Main Street and our Seventh Street Corridor, Malala Avenue Corridor has been very successful, especially in the non-rainy season when people want to be outside. For the most part, the vendors that, or businesses that have frontage along... For the most part, the vendors that, or businesses that have frontage along Main Street, or Seventh Street, or Malala, any of those streets, in many cases are using the sidewalk without a permit, right? So they're doing great things out there. We want those things to continue, but there's some standards by which we kind of feel like we need to enforce and, and get to a place where we can issue a permit. So we've put together what we call an Oregon City Active Sidewalk, so this is the one sidewalk topic that doesn't involve tree roots or tripping hazards. It's more about, I guess it could be tripping hazards, but it's more about making sure our sidewalks are, are used in a manner consistent with the kind of districts that they are, that ADA access is provided. And so, we've got this plan to assemble a community task force, and some of the members would be from our Transportation Advisory Committee, representatives from the downtown Oregon City Association Board, at least a couple of business owners, local residents, and representatives from the CIC. So it's our intent to, in fact, the, some of the work that's already happened is already reached out to some of those businesses and kind of talked to them about needs and how we might kind of make this work in a way that, again, the city can, can permit, because right now, those aren't permitted. So more interviews with stakeholders, sitting down with this, this task force, and pull together some ideas and probably some code recommendations that would then come back to the city commission. So we're, may, get, might get out there and you might hear about it, I just wanted to make sure you got it from us sooner than later.
A question. Is the intent of this effort to try and restrict those activities, or is it to try and guide businesses so that they're, they're displaying their wares safely?
I think it's more about, yeah, the second option. We definitely recognize the value of storefronts and, and those. Unfortunately, Oregon City sidewalks aren't as wide as some other jurisdictional sidewalks in those kind of business areas. So trying to manage, let's say, A-frame signs, we've kind of dealt with that, but, you know, maybe clothing racks or tables and umbrellas, trying to make it such that they're safe so people aren't tripping over those, and especially those with special needs that might need wheelchair access or they're sight impaired.
Thank you.
Trying to manage where those things are at.
Next?
Okay, next, an update from Eric Underwood.
Thank you. As the mayor alluded to earlier in the meeting, mayor and I had a chance to meet with representatives from the SBA to talk about a new initiative that they're encouraging cities to get involved in, which is called the Startup in a Day Initiative. So it focuses on entrepreneurs and making, or having local jurisdictions make it easier for them to start up a business by going to, having easy access to permitting and licensing, and just being able to know what to do to start up a business within a day's time. So in that discussion, they, we talked about some of our programs that we have, and they encouraged us to make a pledge to participate in this initiative to make it easier for entrepreneurs. Turns out, we've done a lot of things already that do this with the business toolkit. We have our business license permitting online. We have a website, and that's very easy to access. And we've done the work with the Community Investment Initiative a couple of years ago to look at our policies and procedures. So they're very encouraged, and they said that if we do make that pledge, that we would be the first city in Oregon to do that. They have cities all over the nation who have made the pledge to do that. So I guess that would be a request to see if the commission would want us to make that pledge, and all it is, is just send a simple email saying that we would do that.
So, meeting with these folks, I was pleasantly surprised to see how impressed they were of the work that Eric and his folks have done as far as the, you know, the, the business toolbox thing and, and having this stuff, you know, they said, "Wow, you know, you guys have already done pretty much everything we were gonna ask you to do in the first place." So kudos to Eric and for the work he's done, and I just wanted to make sure we brought it here to get everybody's, like, okey-dokey before we did that, so...
I think it's a great initiative, and it definitely is, sends a message that Oregon City is business friendly. I just wouldn't want to tie the city's hands too much if there's some kind of a...
There isn't.
Building code or safety.
Yeah.
Nope, okay. Never mind.
Okay, so I think you have your answer.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And I have, I do have a couple more. On the, the Amtrak station, the depot project with the lease, wanted to let you know that we're getting ready to put a date on that lease agreement that we approved about 17 months ago. As you know, we had to go back and do a Phase 2, and that, that took some time, and now the tenant is ready to move in, and so he's, he's, he will be signing it, and our date is February 8th, is when he will be taking over the lease. And lastly, I haven't received the official report yet, but I have been in communications with the environmental groups who's been doing the testing on 10th and Main Street for Phase 2 environmental, and they assured me that the report will be clean, so there's, there's no further mitigation to do on that site, so... And that's part of our due diligence in the purchase and sale agreement for 10th and Main.
Next, I have Chief Band provide an update on some of the hiring that's been going on in the police department.
You're gonna meet some of them on February 17th. We, there's been, as you know, in the last budget, there were some new positions that got approved, including a traffic position, and we've got...
That doesn't mean we're gonna lose the, the grumpy white-haired guy, does it?
Oh, there's...
I was so busy the other day.
He's not that grumpy, he's pretty cheerful.
He's really actually enjoys it.
A few people are grumpy after they meet him. But, you know, the funny thing is, is much work he's done in the community, I haven't taken a, I have taken one complaint. But that's a pretty good track record. We get a lot of compliments about the good job that he's doing, so. We are, you'll, you'll meet some, new folks will be squaring in February 17th. We have one person who, new officer's coming back from the academy here shortly. He'll be done in about a week. We're sending two to the academy, and then we just actually hired a veteran officer from Portland, and so we're pretty excited to get up to our highest staff numbers that we've ever been, which will be 44 total staff.
If they could all be working at the same time, that'd be handy.
That's what we're working on. And in addition, we have one record specialist.
So, do you want to give us an update on what happened or not?
On...
With Dan? Or have you done that via email, or?
Well, I can, there was a, there was an incident that I think several people are aware of, a SWAT standoff that was up on McGuffin Boulevard, that was in Clackamas County Sheriff's Office in their area, and we had three people on the SWAT team. Only one of our SWAT officers was there, but like any other major incident, there's, we all help each other. We had a K-9 officer there because sometimes when you're dealing with an individual and they're gonna take off running, it's nice to have a K-9 unit there in case you need to utilize them, and our, our officer ended up spending a long time talking to somebody, trying to get them some help, and during the course of all that, I'm not gonna say too much because they're still investigating that, it ended up being an officer-involved shooting, but one of our officers was injured. He's not back to work yet. He's gonna go see an orthopedist next week, and, and we'll see, but his, his spirits are good, and physically, he's, he's gonna be fine, it's just a matter of what's, what's going on with his knee, and, but, he's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cockle? I assume Mo's coming up?
It's best for last. Just do want to thank our officers, not only helping out in our community, but all throughout, so our thoughts are with them, and our officer to get better as quick as he can. And now we have Library Director Cole.
Yay!
Good evening, Mayor Holliday and Commissioners. It's so nice to be here in front of you again. So I have a bunch of slides. It may not look like a lot of change to you, but it seems like a lot of change to me. They're putting up the metal framing on the inside, which will show the, the few interior rooms that we have. It's a very open building, so there's only a few rooms on the inside. Importantly, one of them is my office.
With a window.
With a window. Yeah. So this is the, what do they call this, Bryant, the sample wall that they're building? The, whatever? So this is where they put all the materials together so that the architects can see how it's all coming together and that the colors are just right and everything. And what is really interesting is, you know, you can see that in some places, there will be, you know, cutouts for the bricks, and also there's a real difference in texture. Some of the bricks are smooth and some are rough, and it, you know, you have to get kind of close to see some of that, but it creates a really nice, interesting experience instead of just like all. And then the, the color of the, the yellow parts are really, really nice. They go together really well. And this one shows the eyebrow feature that will be going around much of the building above the windows on the second floor. Yeah, eyebrows. This is on the first floor, and where the framing particularly shows, in addition to the interior rooms, is the windows. So that's looking out towards Jefferson, that's in the children's area, that will be above built-in bookshelves. That's the children's librarians, which we now have one. Office, next to it is a family restroom, and then next to that will be a really nice storage area for all the children's materials, you know, or crafts and all that stuff. They are kind of infamous for having lots of annoying stuff. Well, it gets everywhere because there's just so much of it, you know? That's kind of just the scale model, and that's our fantastic construction site manager, Dave Van Black. He is doing such an awesome job. So this is looking towards Seventh, and that's all children's. It's even bigger than, I mean, the scale is hard to say, see, you know, from here, but it's, it's a, it's a big room. I don't know why I put so many, oh, that's my office. That's why I put that in there.
It's huge!
Mo's office. It actually has a window out the back and two windows into the adult area, which I probably will have the blinds down most of the time. Door locked, blinds down. So this is looking towards the corner of John Adams and Seventh, and, you know, you can see that eyebrows coming down, that metal stuff coming down, that's where those are gonna be, and you just get that really nice treehouse effect up there. It's really great. And then I just did kind of a panorama around. You get such a great view of the bluff over in West, West Lynn, and it's kind of got this mirror effect on it because it's not dried in yet, so there is water in there. And then towards Atkinson, and then all of that, that's standing right, right in front of us, where that rail is, that will be a laptop bar with stools at. So like, kind of right there, you'd be at the top of the stairs on the second floor. And then there's the open area that will be looking out towards Jefferson from the second floor. Now, I mean, there will be stacks, you know, the shelves of books, so it's not like you're just gonna have this clear view out. There will be a lot of things in the way, but it's very open. These are the two conference rooms. You can kind of see the wall between the two of them. There's the smaller one off to the left will be like, right kind of in the teen area, and that's the little makerspace, and then the large one goes all the way to the left, the other side of the picture, and it's gonna be a really nice size, I think, for small meetings, you know, like 10, 12, 15 people max, but, you know, that kind of where, we have a lot of groups that size that want space. That's just another view, that, over by the teen area where you can see there'll be more windows. Yeah, nice, huh? And then this is, the elevator is just outside the picture, the new elevator, and there's a little nook around it, there's gonna be a table right here, and from here, you look over into the lobby and over at the back wall of the Carnegie, and then the, the window that will be over by the Carnegie, that will have that pattern on it to help mediate or whatever, you know, kind of soften the view of the roof of the Carnegie. So that's what we're working on with the artist right now, the public art process that we're going through. And then, same place that you'd be standing, looking over the foyer, down into children's. So it's pretty open, pretty open, and we got some new aerial views that I wanted you to see, because this gives you a real sense.
It's nice.
This actually was not done by drone. It was just, yeah. This just gives you a nice sense of...
It's a nice blue color.
Symmetry.
And that says skylight in the middle of the building?
Mm-hmm, that's the skylight in the middle, exactly.
Wow, that's cool.
And you can now see it from City Hall. Yeah. And it's coming along really well. I think that's the last one, yeah. And it's looking great, and we're still on time and on budget.
Fantastic.
Go team.
Excited to see that brick up, coming up.
Yeah, and it's gonna look really nice.
Okay, so before we head on, I want, Bernada, did you and Brian go to that housing thing? So you guys want to give us a, a quick update on that before we go to Commissioner comments?
We both did. It was a half-day presentation. The early part of it was a really inspiring presentation by the mayor of Seattle and about how they have taken a really innovative approach that's working for them in terms of encouraging more equitable and affordable housing, and he made the point that it's not just the price point of the house, it's how accessible it is to transportation and grocery store and all the things that might make life easy, and if you take a lot of transportation costs out of the equation, affordability, it affects affordability and livability. So that was very interesting. They went through a lot of different options that communities could look at to incorporate more affordability. There's some low-hanging fruit that they talked about. One of the, one of them is being more open to accessory dwelling units. You could also provide incentives like systems development charge write-downs for more market, more affordable housing. Land is always good if there's public land that could be provided, that certainly reduces the cost of development. So there were a lot of options that were tossed out, and I will get the commission, both the executive summary, which is an easy read, and the 41-page full report, and...
In electronic form, please.
Of course. And I understand that they may be, that may have a topic at a retreat, so we'll have lots of time to chew on that.
Missing was Clackamas County.
That was a surprise.
Well, my concern is that rumor has it, they were gonna sell their Holcombe property, the, the project up there, the, like, Clackamas County Housing Authority has the project up there, and they were gonna sell that, and I was just thinking about that, all through that forum, and how sad that is, that they should be going the other way and be accelerating the density on that property, because those things are spread out pretty far. It's already set up for it, transit lines there and everything, and we should be having that conversation with them.
Well, who, who, who gave you the rumor that they were thinking about selling?
I, yeah, I just, just said, I was saying, that's a rumor, because I've heard it about three times, but I, Monday, get ahold of somebody at county to find that out.
Mr. Lewis? So at the C4 Metro Committee meeting, they talked about it at the county and their housing authority manager, can't remember his name, but they talked about how much housing that Clackamas County has, and how old their properties are, and how they would need the proceeds from that sale to help improve their other older properties. So that was kind of the way it was presented, and so what...
I don't remember, I didn't mention that to you, Brian, did I?
I can't remember.
So what, what, what would their, what is their intention, to sell it off to a private developer?
Sure.
Sure. That's what it sounded like to me.
Are they required to have a certain amount of housing?
They say they do, but they have that already, so...
Yeah, they, they kind of indicated that while there was a housing need, they recognized that as well, that, and they also indicated that they were looking for property closer to some of the town centers and, and transit routes, and that wasn't really, you know, it is kind of in a, in a place that's not as convenient as maybe some of the other places they'd like to, but they have no, well, they didn't talk about the property, if they had other property in mind.
I know that a couple of years ago, there was a work group, because we were involved in it a little bit, where they had looked at...
They had looked at putting...
in it a little bit, where they had looked at, they had looked at putting some more condensed housing, some kind of apartment units, or something like that, and that conversation went on for several months, and then I don't, I stopped hearing about it.
They actually did a very thoughtful and extensive public engagement process up in the workplace with the neighbors to come up with a redevelopment plan. Federal funding, there was a...
They messed up the grant.
There was an issue with the grant, unfortunately, but it was, it was well-done.
Okay. So, continuing with Commission Communications, did you have anything else, Bernada?
Yes, I attended the Main Street...
Can you get your microphone a little closer? You're kind of soft-spoken.
Last week, I attended the Main Street brainstorming session. Mr. Lewis was there as well. It was a lively discussion. I'd say there were about 60 people in the room, if not more, lots of great ideas, and they're going to be fashioning that all into a game plan for the year, so it was, it was a great process, and kudos to Jonathan Stone and his team for leading that effort.
Shaw?
Okay. Attended OCBA, and got to listen to the mayor, and our pro temp city manager, I guess, might say, give a little thoughtful discussion on the state of the city, which we're going to hear more of on Friday, I assume.
Less of.
Less of. Okay. Also, went to our normal South Fork meeting, and then, went to the county city dinners that was held at the Bob's Red Mill on last Thursday, I believe it was, and there was four representatives there, Rod Monroe, and Rosenbaum, and a couple other, I can't remember who they were.
Was Jeff Verden there?
No, no. It was Alan.
Olson.
Alan Olson, and another lady, I didn't know who that was. So, but anyways, kind of, they just talked about what was going on down in Salem, and what the possibilities were and stuff, but while I was there, this was at Bob's Red Mill, which is in Milwaukee, and I thought these were kind of cool, maybe, I know Rocky might get a kick out of these, but they passed these things out in a little pamphlet and stuff to anybody that, it has all of their events that they do in Milwaukee on a little postcard, so it's kind of fun what they do there and stuff, if you want to look at those. Also, went to the Trails End slide, BAM slide, fundraiser for the landslide victims on Saturday, and since the mayor wasn't there, I had to get interviewed.
I was there.
I was there. You weren't there early enough, though.
Those different times. I've been on TV plenty.
Anyway, Channel 8 and Channel 2 were there, and I think they made $2,500 at that thing, so that was pretty good, so, it's pretty nice. They went to Chamber, and went to CIC. There we go.
I went to the BAM thing at Trails End as well, and missed South Fork, it was at parent-teacher conferences, so.
You didn't miss anything?
I didn't miss anything. All right. You had it covered?
Yeah, pretty much.
All right. That's it.
Polly?
Well, some of this has already been covered, but I went to Oregon City Business Alliance, and it was a great presentation by Tony Conkle and our mayor, very informative about business and what we're doing to increase that, increase jobs in Oregon City where we're going. We all spent a lot of time at the city manager interview process last couple of weeks, and I also attended the Willamette Falls Legacy Partner Meeting, which was great, as always, we hadn't met for a while, and we just kind of reviewed the whole organizational structure, where we're going, where we've been, and the River Walk planning, and how that process is going. Everything's going very well, it's just a matter of keeping it going, keeping it moving. One thing that is really great is that we are working with the property owner to make sure that the private development and the public development of the River Walk really work together and are integrated, so I'm really impressed with that, making sure that that, that they complement each other.
Okay. So, I went to the Legacy Project Partners Meeting, and Carol's done a very good job of describing what happened there. Well, I did the, as well as the OCBA State of the City address, I did the North Clackamas Chamber State of the City address with the mayor of Happy Valley, the mayor of Milwaukee, the mayor of Damascus, oh, and the mayor, the council president from Gladstone, because the mayor had resigned the previous evening. So, that was interesting and fun, and we continue working on those kinds of things. I've also was at the, oh, met with, like I said, we met with the SBA and talked about those issues. I've done several other quieter meetings that I'm not going to really discuss, but generally speaking, I've been spending quite a bit of time here at City Hall, dealing with other things. I wanted to tell Tony how much I appreciate the hard work he does. We have seen over the last year or two in other places around the country that have, how do I put this, not shown appreciation for their police forces, and I want to take this time to make sure that our guys know that we fully support them, that they're an incredibly important part of our community, and that I'm pretty sure the citizens of Oregon City don't harbor the same issues that other people do in other places, so, just to say that. The last thing for me is, I've asked you guys now, at least once, if not twice, that we have, I have this Citizen of the Year Award coming up, and I have not heard people one from any of you guys, so if you have something, some idea, please send it to me, because I've sort of gone through the list already, so I need some help. So, if you guys could do that, I'd appreciate it. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
There's some volunteers in the audience, though.
Yeah.
Okay. After the meeting? Okay. So, anything else for the good of the order? Then, we are going to adjourn...